This conference will now be recorded.
We're being recorded. I'd like to welcome you to the June 4th, 2020 meeting of the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization Policy Board. Thank you for joining us. We have some preliminary comments that we have to read. We're not going to read everything, but we're going to read certain parts. As in our last meeting, we asked everyone to identify themselves first when speaking, so we can more accurately record the activities of the meeting. All lines have been muted by the administrator to minimize additional noise and feedback. You may unmute your line at any time to request acknowledgement from the chair. Staff will be monitoring the chat throughout the meeting to assure we do not overlook anyone wishing to participate in the discussion. I will now ask our secretary to certify we followed the approved procedures for appropriate notice of this meeting and the means by which we're convening. Mr. Secretary, and Ms. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and confirm. This is Nicole Mueller. I can certify that we have followed the approved procedures.
Thank you. I would ask, we're going to conduct a roll call to establish a quorum. Please indicate your presence by saying aye or here. When your name is called during a roll call, anyone who wishes to identify themselves following the roll call of members will be invited to do so then. Ms. Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Please take a moment and find your unmute button. I will now be taking attendance by roll call. Charles City County, Mr. Coda. I think he's here. I think I saw Mr. Coda. Mr. Coda, can you hear me? Moving on, Chesterfield County, Mr. Carroll.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Holland. Mr. Winslow.
Present.
Ms. Haley. City of Richmond, Mr. Addison. Ms. Gray. Ms. Lynch. Ms. Newbill.
Present.
Mr. Hilbert. Mr. Jones. Ms. Larson. Ms. Robertson. Butchland County, Mr. Lumpkins.
Present.
Mr. Spoonhour. Mr. Kilduff. Ms. Lascolette. Hanover County, Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Flag. Ms. Pritchard. Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Here.
Mr. Thornton. Mr. Brannan. New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Present.
Mr. Tiller. Mr. Evelyn. Powhatan County, Mr. Nordvik. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Shardine. Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Here, present, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Spagna. Capital Region Airport Commission, Mr. Rutledge.
Aye.
GRTC Transit System, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
Ms. Adams. RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Here.
Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Here.
Mr. Riblet.
Present.
CTAC, Mr. Richwine. Mr. Basham. DRPT, Ms. DeBru.
Here.
Ms. Dubinsky.
Here.
FHWA, Mr. Nelson. FTA, Mr. Konig. Ridefinders, Ms. Tisdale.
Here.
Ms. Ruffin. And DOAV, Mr. Burnett. That concludes the roll call for the attendance, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Do we have a quorum, Mr. Secretary?
We do have a quorum, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Pat O'Bannon.
Ms. O'Bannon?
Yeah, the screen is showing that Mr. Thornton and Mr. Coda are participating, but we didn't hear from them. Perhaps there's a technical difficulty? Is there something they could do? Say, use the chat screen or text Mr. Parsons or just to show that they're here, present? I mean, is, Mr. Parsons, do you have a number that they could text you or? Or, I feel bad that they're, it looks like they haven't, for some reason, they're not able to respond. That's all.
Good point.
Yes, I believe that in order for us to officially register votes, we need to be able to hear a voice vote. But I also saw that in addition to Mr. Thornton and Mr. Coda, Mr. Spoonhour looks to be on the call and was not able to respond. So, yes, please, if you're able to signify yourself at some point during the meeting or let us know in the chat, that would be probably the preferable way to signify your attendance.
Can you tell them where the chat is, Mr. Parsons?
Yes, sir. The chat is, if you're looking at your screen, it should be a speech bubble on the right side that you can click on and then the chat window should open.
Mr. Parsons? Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Neil Spoonhour. I did, I did try to identify myself. It looks like it's working, but obviously you didn't hear me.
We can hear you now. So, do you have that, Ms. Mueller?
Be careful what you ask for.
Thank you. Anyone else who's been able to make connection verbally? If, if not, as suggested.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Is this Mr. Thornton?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. We can hear you.
All right.
Thank you so much for joining us. I don't know what the trouble is, but I appreciate Ms. O'Bannon catching that. Anything else? Anybody else? Then we will move on and I will ask that the secretary read the statement regarding virtual meetings. Bear with us. We'll skip some parts, but we do need to read this, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if you're able to see your screen, you can follow along. This is item two, the statement regarding virtual meetings. Since the governor declared the state of emergency on March 12th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, state and local government bodies have been providing for the continuity of government by meeting remotely by telephonic or electronic means in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, the Commonwealth's Emergency and other applicable laws, guidance provided by the Attorney General and their respective legal counsel. On April 22nd, the General Assembly approved a budget amendment to authorize all public bodies, including regional bodies such as Plan RBA and the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization likewise to meet by electronic means without a physical quorum assembled together during a governor declared state of emergency. As long as certain conditions are met so as to provide for the continuity of governmental operations, this new authority is effective immediately. The bylaws of the RTPO Policy Board define a quorum of the body to be 14 of the 27 total members. The 2020 COVID-19 virus makes it impractical and unsafe, even potentially life-threatening for a quorum of this size to physically assemble in one location pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2A3. Further, this virus makes it impractical and unsafe for the public and the agency staff to gather in the same location to participate in the meeting. The health, safety, and welfare of our community is of paramount importance. Therefore, we have determined the appropriateness and eligibility to conduct today's meeting of the RTPO electronically pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 and related legislation approved by the General Assembly of Virginia in light of the governor's state of emergency declaration for COVID-19. The convening of the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization has been determined necessary in order to continue the necessary business of the organization. The matters included on the agenda address important and essential matters of continuing the work of government, and therefore it is appropriate to convene during this time. While we do not know the exact duration of the current practice of electronic meetings, we will continue to function in this manner until such time as it is deemed advisable to return to in-person meetings. At this time, we expect meetings to occur in electronic format through the current declaration. And it is, this is a good time to note that the governor has extended the emergency declaration with an indefinite end date. So, the declaration holds past June 10th. RTPO staff have provided notice of this meeting and the means by which we are virtually gathered to members of the public. Notice was provided on May 22nd, 2020 through posting on the Plan RBA website and distribution of email notification to members, alternates, and known interested parties, including the media. In order to comply with the provisions of Virginia law and to improve accessibility to the discussions intended for today, this meeting will be recorded. Audio and visual recordings of the meeting will be posted on the Plan RBA website within 48 hours of the meeting. Any members of the public wishing to address the RTPO were invited to submit comments via email until the close of business one day prior to the meeting in order to be reviewed and addressed during the meeting if necessary. Anyone participating as an observer during the meeting today may submit comments or questions at any time during the meeting via email at rtpoinput@planrba.org or by using the online chat functions of the meeting platform. Those individuals who are observing by phone may be called upon to address the RTPO with their questions or comments. All comments and questions submitted during the meeting will be reviewed following the meeting, and to the extent practical, responses may be provided or posted on the Plan RBA website. Does anyone have any questions regarding the process for assuring effective facilitation of this meeting or for how members of the public may participate?
Any questions? Not hearing any. Item, we'll dispense with the reading of item three on your agenda. Procedures for Electronic Meetings, they are on your agenda and on the website for the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization if you wish to read them. And I'll move on to item A, Administration. Number one, Approval of the Richmond Regional Transportation Policy Board Meeting Agenda. I'm not aware of any amendments. Are there any questions or comments about the agenda itself? Not hearing any. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Approve.
Yes. I can't tell who it is, but I heard somebody.
Sean Davis moves for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Patricia Page moves a second.
I heard Mr. Williams' second. There were other seconds, but I heard Mr. Williams'. Ms. Mueller, will you take the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Board will not be voting on item A1, Approval of RTPO Policy Board Meeting Agenda. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
I think I'm here. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Hi.
Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Butchland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
CRAC, Mr. Rutledge.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
That concludes the roll call.
Thank you. Is there anyone who's joined us whose name was not called but thought their name should have been called? Not hearing any. It sounds like the motion has passed with all eyes. I'm moving on to item number two, Approval of the May 7th, 2020 RPO Policy Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any, is there any discussion, any changes members would like to make? If not, do I hear a motion?
Pat O'Bannon, Mr. Chairman, makes motion to approve.
Chris Winslow's second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Winslow's second, Ms. O'Bannon made the motion. Ms. Mueller, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Voting on item A2, the meeting minutes of, oh, I can't see it. I think it's May?
Seven.
Seven. Thank you, sir. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Butchland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
CRAC, Mr. Rutledge.
Like the same.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The minutes are approved. Moving on to item number three, this is the portion of the agenda for public comment on the June 4th, 2020 agenda. We'd ask the public to speak only on items on the agenda. There is a place later at the end of the meeting for general comments. At this time, we'll accept comments on the agenda. Are there any comments from the public? Mr. Secretary, do we have any electronic comments?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Not hearing any. We'll move on to item number four, the Chairman's Report. The Executive Committee discussed the meeting for July, and it is their recommendation that we continue on our regularly scheduled meeting schedule, which would be the first Thursday of the month, specifically the July. Our next meeting would be July 2nd. There's no vote required. In the past, the Policy Board has considered combining meetings during the summer, but it's the feeling of the Executive Committee that we should go ahead and we'll be meeting virtually as indicated by Mr. Parsons and also indicated by Mr. Gregory during our Executive Committee meeting. We need to meet virtually. Are there any questions about that? So, to sum it up, sorry for the long comment, we're meeting again virtually July 2nd. Any comments?
So, it will be virtually? This is Pat O'Bannon. Virtual, okay.
It'll be a virtual meeting.
Thank you.
Not hearing any. I will ask, we'll move on to item number five, the Secretary's Report. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to briefly go over our current work efforts and the financial report. We will have staff reports today on the Connect RBA 2045 Long Range Plan, so I won't go through that. These are all items that are included in your agenda. If you haven't had a chance to review, please take some time after the meeting and go back and look. The Greater RBA Transit Vision Plan is wrapping up. I think we got our final technical memorandum draft from our consultant team this morning or yesterday afternoon. So, that should come back to you later, probably later this summer for a presentation about the results of the RBA Transit Vision Plan. The Ashland Trial Line Study is moving forward. We are actually re-upping our agreements with the National Park Service for technical assistance with this project, and we're excited about the opportunity to highlight the Ashland Trial Line as part of the larger Ashland to Petersburg project and the attention that that will bring to this segment of the community. As part of the Long Range Plan, we are updating our Regional Bike and Pedestrian Plan, and there is now a story map that is available for review. There's a link in your agenda packet under that item in the current work efforts, if you would like to take a look at that. It's pretty exciting and it really supplements the text of a plan when you can take a look at maps and graphics and understand where things are in relation to the conversation. We are completing our Complete Streets Pilot Project in Ashland, and again, the final report is being developed now. I did want to highlight the American Planning Association, the Virginia chapter, rescheduled their annual conference. It is now scheduled for September 13th to the 16th. So, if your staff are planners or certified planners and would benefit from that, send your attention to that conference opportunity. It will be here in Richmond. So, there's a lot of folks here on this call that are actively engaged with planning for that conference. And then finally, as the Chair mentioned, there is a technical need to have the July 2nd meeting. One of those needs is to talk about smart scale. If you remember, we submitted 12 regional projects for pre-application and review to VDOT, and we do need to narrow that list down to 10 for a final application. So, that will happen at our July 2nd meeting. We are talking with TAC about that next week. So, hopefully TAC will have a recommendation for you to consider in July. The Work Status Report is there and is available for your review as well as the financials for the month. One of the agenda items today is a slight amendment to the existing work program to carry us through June 30th, and it doesn't change the overall numbers, but it does shift some funds to some of the work tasks that are in higher need and have seen more attention, especially during the quarantine and the shutdown, such as transit and bicycle pedestrians planning. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. If there's any questions, be happy to take them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Parsons?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Pat O'Bannon. Just a request, actually. When the smart scale presentation is done, could they give more of the background or details in our track record as to how successful we've been? I would just like to understand what they judge us on. More than what we're going to do, but what is, how have they judged us in the past?
Changes by the year.
Good question.
I'd like, can we see a chart or something, or someone could make some kind of a presentation that shows this is what we submitted and this is what we got, and this is why they said we got it? And then, you know, just a little bit more about what it is they're looking for. Because, well, I feel we haven't done as well as maybe we could. I mean, maybe we can figure out how to do it better or get it, you know, get the money we need. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I think that Mr. Mann may be able to address this during his report later on, but we did, if you recall, we did have a presentation when round four was being developed about the metrics that they were going to use to evaluate projects. But we can certainly have staff talk about previous applications and where we fell short and what we're trying to do to address it this time around. But I think it's with round four, as in the other rounds, the measurements have changed slightly. So, I think that we're hopeful and we think that our priorities will reflect well in the final scoring.
Any other questions for Mr. Parsons? Comments? If not, move on to new business. I point out that the first five items require a vote, and we appreciate you being here for that. The first item is the tip amendment as requested by VDOT. Mr. Bushing, can you present?
Yes, I can present. Okay. So, this first item is a set of tip amendments for the FY '18 to FY '21, the current tip. So, we received 14 requests from VDOT a few months back, but given the meeting schedule, it's taken a little bit to get to you. So, the first 12 are new projects. These are statewide projects related to the I-95 Corridor Improvement Plan. These are projects like ramp metering, variable signage, a towing program up and down the 95 corridor. They don't use any TPO funds, but they need to be in our tip for the region as well. One of the amendments is an existing project. So, this is the Pole Green Widening in Hanover County. This is coming before the Policy Board because the cost estimate is changing. The current tip only shows PE because the project was originally only scheduled to have PE during this tip. We're now including the entire cost of the project, so it's going from about $700,000 up to $20 million. Because of that large change, we wanted to make sure it came before the Policy Board, so you were aware of why that was changing. This is also adding advanced construction to allow the county to tap into their FY '22 funds a little bit early. And then the last amendment is a change to the preventative bridge maintenance grouping. It's adding about $9.5 million to that grouping, and that's coming from SDBG funds and NHPP, which is the National Highway Performance Program Funds. So, all of those amendments have been reviewed by TAC, and TAC did recommend approval as presented. The amendments were also posted on our website for a 15-day public comment period, and we received no comments on any of the proposed amendments. So, what we're requesting today is that the Policy Board amend the tip or add the 12 new projects, amend the one existing project and the one project grouping. And then the resolution also notes that these amendments are considered exempt under the conformity provisions. So, that's everything for this item. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Bushing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
I hear a motion. Is there a second? Motion, Mr. Peterson.
I have a second, but I have a question.
Second, Ms. O'Bannon, your question.
Have we heard anything, maybe too soon, about funding for this due to the economy? I mean, funding for anything? I just thought I'd ask it here.
Mr. Bushing?
Anybody?
Sure. So, we haven't heard back on the SIP and the updates. I don't know if Mr. Mann has more information on that, but we're still working with VDOT to finalize the RSTPC MAC as well because it's all on hold. So, we don't have. So we don't have any updates right now.
So when you say they're on hold, what do you mean?
Sure. So the CTV was reviewing the funding and tracking how things were changing before approving the next round of allocation. So our allocations for RSTPC MAC are expected to take place in the fall as opposed to normally we would have it adopted before the new six-year program was adopted in June. So it's a little bit of a delay and it's just how the finances play out is essentially the way we understand it.
There will be a delay because of the finances. Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other, does that answer your question, Ms. O'Bannon?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, I'd ask Ms. Mueller to call the roll.
Yes, sir. The Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B, number one, Tip Amendment, VDOT Request. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Jim. I'm sorry, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
I believe the motion passed, all ayes. Thank you very much. I'll move on then to item number two, which is the FY 21-24 Transportation Program Tip. Mr. Bushing?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is the new tip for FY 21 to FY 24. Just to go through a brief overview, the tip is basically our planned transportation investments over the next four years. We're required to update it every three years, which matches up with the state's STIP schedule, which is the state's transportation improvement program. Including a project in the tip is a necessary element to be eligible for federal funding. If it's not in there, can't get federal dollars. And the tip projects are consistent with our long-range plan. So one of the things that we're reviewing is that it does match up with our vision for the region. So this year, we made a few changes to the overall format for the tip. They're pretty small. One thing we did was move the financial plan from the appendix at the back to the front of the plan to emphasize that it's constrained and we only have limited dollars to spend. The projects were reorganized. So in the current tip, they're organized by the sponsor. We've reorganized it by system to really emphasize that this is a regional spending plan. The completed projects, so those that have already been finished based on their schedule, but might still have to be in the tip for closeout purposes, are listed separately at the back as opposed to with the projects that have new spending. And then the performance-based planning section has been updated to discuss the changes to the adopted measures, our past performance over the past few years, and then our planned investments over the four-year life of the new tip. All the projects that are in the tip have gone through some sort of prioritization, whether it was Smart Scale, RSTPC MAC, TA. So they've gone through some process to be selected. And then we've also analyzed them against the LRTP, as I mentioned, to make sure that they were consistent with the regional goals and with our constrained plan for the region. So the draft tip did undergo a 45-day public comment period. This was back in February and ran through early April. It was advertised in two newspapers. It was shared via social media and email with interested parties, including media. We had a webpage set up with interactive maps and a comment form. We did have to cancel the in-person open house due to the COVID-19 situation. It was still available online and we did reshare that several times. Unfortunately, we did not receive any additional public comment through that process. So in addition to adopting the tip and the spending plan, when the MPO adopts a tip, we're also required to adopt a self-certification resolution. Basically, what that says is that we are complying with the federal regulations around metropolitan transportation planning. So this is also included in the action item today. TAC has reviewed both the draft tip and the self-certification resolution and recommended approval as presented. We did have a couple minor changes that I wanted to bring up. So since this went to TAC, we also worked with VDOT to review the tip to make sure there was alignment between the tip and the step. We did find five changes that are needed. These are minor changes that staff felt comfortable. This did not need to go through another public comment period. Four were old projects that were included erroneously at the beginning, and there were no obligations on the projects. Their old bus purchases or like 895, the initial preliminary engineering. So these were erroneously included. We pulled those out. One project, Spring Run Sidewalk in Chesterfield County, had a small decrease in the overall cost estimate. The tip that went through public review showed $107,000 and the actual estimate now is only $99,000. So the cost has gone down. Since it was going down, staff felt that this was a minor change. And we're recommending that we adopt it with these minor changes to ensure consistency with it. So the action we're requesting today is that the Policy Board adopt the FY 21 to FY 24 Transportation Improvement Program with those changes included. And that VDOT and the TPO's Policy Board certified that we are meeting the Metropolitan Transportation Planning Process requirements, including Metropolitan Planning, the Clean Air Act, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, non-discrimination in employment and business opportunity, involvement of disadvantaged businesses in federally funded projects, equal employment opportunity in federally funded projects, ADA, the Older Americans Act, which prohibits discrimination basis of age, discrimination on gender basis, and then the Rehabilitation Act, which is prohibiting discrimination against individuals with disabilities. So these are the core areas that we're required to show compliance with, and that's what the resolution includes. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Bushing? Ms. O'Bannon?
You said the changes. Are they listed in this or have they been removed from the list?
They've been removed from the draft document that's available.
Here.
These four changes, I can give you the UPCs if you'd like. I have them available. But they were, as I mentioned, four old projects. So it was three GRTC bus purchases that are over a decade old. And then 895 Connector, the original preliminary engineering for that. So that was also a very old project.
But what we have in front of us is exactly what you're going to send for your.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bushing? If not, do I hear a motion?
A move for approval, Pat O'Bannon.
Ms. O'Bannon?
Second.
Second, Patricia Page.
I heard Ms. Page, second. Sorry if I left somebody out. Ms. Mueller, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Board will not be voting on Agenda Item B to the draft FY 21 to FY 24 tip. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim. GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
Thank you. RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
I heard all ayes. Resolution passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, the Fiscal Year 21 Unified Planning Work Program. Mr. Parsons?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is, as I mentioned earlier, this is a slight adjustment to the existing FY 20 Work Program, which extends through June 30th of this year. And it is an updating three work tasks with funding to identify, to overcome some shortfalls where our consultant teams actually expended more funds than were expected during this shutdown. And that's mostly related to the development of the Transit Vision Plan. So we were able to, because we had additional funds identified under Item 7230 Contingency Funding, we were able to just flex those over to Item 7330 Transit and 7340 Active Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian to cover the slight shortfalls for the rest of this fiscal year. So as you can see on the screen, the highlighted areas are the areas where the adopted work program budget will be adjusted. And this shows the amendment with the adjustments already made. So the requested action today on this is that the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization approves the amendments to the RTPO Fiscal Year 2020 Unified Planning Work Program as presented. And then it also meets all of the federal agreements and requirements as noted in the agenda packet.
Any questions for Mr. Parsons? If not, do I hear a motion?
So move, Peterson.
Mr. Peterson makes a motion. Ms.
A move, Mr. Chair, send to you, Newbell.
Ms. Newbell, second. Ms. Mueller, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. The Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B, three, the FY 20 UPW Budget Amendment. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbell.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I heard the motion was approved, all ayes. Moving on to item number four, the FY 21 Unified Planning Work Program. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you very much. If you remember, last year's Work Program, the FY 20 Work Program, was a departure from previous Work Programs. We really made a concerted effort to condense it and make it more readable for the public and people who are not as familiar with the transportation workings of this organization as all of you are. So keeping with that format, we don't have many major organizational changes to the Work Program for this year. I did want to highlight some of the focus areas. So the slide on the screen talks about our FY 21 focus areas. We continue development of the update to the Long Range Transportation Plan. And it's actually a rewrite. I tend to call it an update, but it's not. We're doing a new Long Range Transportation Plan. We will be spending the entire fiscal year developing that important product for our organization with an eye towards October of '21 for adoption, September, October of '21. We also want to be a resource for the newly created Central Virginia Transportation Authority. In that regard, some of our focus areas of staff will be working to complete Phase Two of the Transit Vision Plan that focuses on critical first steps. And we also want to focus on the things that we were actually referenced in the legislation, which was to work with GRTC collaboratively to develop a regional transit plan. And that is something that is in the works. And we are, we're well into talks with Julie and her staff to make sure that that is something that is prioritized for this fall. We also want to work with the authority to develop a prioritization process that can link back to the work that our staff and all of you are doing to identify transportation priorities through the Long Range Plan that can inform CBTA members of regional priorities that are agreed upon under this organization. Finally, we want to be a forum to discuss active transportation and its benefit to the region for a number of reasons. One, the excitement over the Ashland to Petersburg Trail, the Trolley Line Trail. We want to talk frankly about changes to work schedules and work formats for folks in the region as they deal with COVID-19 and impacts to their schedules and commuting patterns and everything else. So talking about active transportation is one way to, and transit is one way to continue to focus on what that might mean for the region. Our federal planning factors have not changed. There are 10 of them. And our work tasks are divided into five categories. Program Support Administration, General Development and Comprehensive Planning, Long Range Transportation Planning, including things like the Long Range Plan, our Travel Demand Model, Transit Planning and Active Transportation, Short Range Transportation Planning, identifying things like performance-based planning, performance measures, measuring data, data sets that can inform decision-making, our financial programming, like the Transportation Improvement Program, RSTP and CMAC funding and other types of work, as well as rail freight and intermodal planning. And with the state's recent commitment to the I-95 corridor and the rail improvements along that stretch from DC into North Carolina, I think that that's something that we can certainly be a resource for this coming year. And then finally, listed for understanding more than anything is our Rural Transportation Planning component, which is actually covered under the umbrella of Planner RBA, the commission. But we'll be coordinating closely with the commission members to identify rural transportation projects and needs that supplement and coordinate with our efforts here under the TPO. Our budget for FY 21 is, the total numbers are just under $3 million for our total budget. As you can see, split among a number of different categories. These categories have not changed from last year. The funding is split across the top from our PL funds, our Section 5303 funds, our carryover 5303 from previous years, and then other funding, which has been identified, like project-specific RSTP sets of money, as well as our rural transportation dollars, which are coming from other sources through VDOT. If you look at the split in work tasks by those five general categories, 61% goes through Long Range Transportation Planning, 16% into Short Range Transportation Planning, with another 11 in General Development and Comprehensive Plans, Rural Transportation and Program Support. The recommendation for the board today is that the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization approves the RTPO Fiscal Year 2021 Unified Planning Work Program as presented. And that it also meets all of the federal and state agreements and requirements and that information is contained in your agenda packet as well.
Any questions for Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Parsons, this is Neil Spoonhour. Mr. Parsons, yeah, I haven't gotten through this before. How exactly is a long-range plan developed? Is that with this team? Is it with a subcommittee or by staff?
Yes, that's a great question. So the long-range plan is guided through an advisory committee that was established by this board, as well as the TAC. It is mainly comprised of TAC members, but there are also folks representing community interest groups, the C-TAC, and other interest organizations. So the LRTP Advisory Committee guides the process over the 18 to 20 months that it takes to develop this plan, and then there will be presentations back to the TAC and the board on a regular basis, but not every month, regarding progress and impacts, but there aren't decisions made by this board until the advisory committee makes the decision that it's ready to bring to you for recommendation and approval. So the advisory committee really drives the bus and seeks feedback from the Policy Board and the TAC as needed.
Very. Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Ms. O'Bannon?
Have we gotten particip-- how do we, well, in the past, the C-TAC has been concerned that people from air, you know, air folks don't come to their meeting or don't seem to comment. Have we had more comment and participation with C-TAC in the last year? I admit, I just went to like one meeting and then did another one briefly, but what's been going on this year? Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. I'll give a brief update, and then I don't know if Ken Lance would want to provide any comments as well, but we haven't had a lot of interaction between Policy Board members and the C-TAC, but C-TAC is certainly informed in terms of everything that's going on. They get regular updates on TAC and Policy Board action and are included in some of that decision-making. As far as the long-range plan, we opened it up, and any C-TAC member that wanted to participate in the advisory committee was given the opportunity. So I think we have four members of the C-TAC that are on the advisory committee. So I think we're moving in the right direction. So Ken, I don't know if there's anything else you would like to add.
I don't have anything further to add.
I think they had asked us to call them and give them advice and to, if we wanted to do more, have more impact, they wanted us to call them and that they would bring it up and talk about it. That's why I brought it up. That was a really big thing last year. So thank you. So I would just like to recommend anybody on the call or anybody at the TPO that if you feel you need to influence the C-TAC, the Citizens Technical Advisory Committee, you can find out who represents your area or whatever and call them and tell them, you think they ought to concentrate more on this or more on that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Bannon. Any other questions? Not hearing any. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval. Pat O'Bannon.
Second.
Mr. Coda's second.
Phil Coda's second.
Mr. Coda's second. Ms. Mueller, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. The Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B4, the FY21 Unified Planning Work Program. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann. Is Mr. Mann still with us? This, I don't know, this concludes the voting on Item B4.
I can vote in favor on change of behalf.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Ribblet, I will count your vote. Thank you. This concludes the roll call.
Thank you. Thank you all. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is B5, Election of Fiscal Year 21 Richmond Regional Transportation Plan Organization Officers. This was discussed in the Executive Committee. Mr. Coda and Ms. Page have had a discussion, and Mr. Coda, who would normally be the chairman, who is our vice chairman, has elected to ask that he and New Kent County, or Charles City-New County, New Kent County switch, allowing Ms. Page, representing New Kent County, to be the chairman for fiscal year 21, and he would continue in the vice chair position. And I understand from Mr. Gregory that our bylaws allow for this switch. Mr. Gregory?
That is correct. The Policy Board adopted MPO, Policy Board Leadership Rotation Guidance Document in 2018. The guidance document is non-binding. It provides guidance, but it can be deviated from if the board so chooses.
So the recommendation from the Executive Committee is that the resolution be adopted that elects or proposes to elect Ms. Page as chairman for fiscal year 21 and Mr. Coda as vice chairman for fiscal year 21. Do I have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Phil Coda.
Mr. Coda?
I would just like to thank Ms. Page for stepping up, since I'm so new to the board and accepting to do the chair for this year. That's all my discussion sort of involved.
Thank you, Mr. Coda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson moves for approval. Sean Davis, second, I heard. Ms. Mueller, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. The Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B5, Election of FY21 RRTPO Officers. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Goochland County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Mr. Thornton.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA, Ms. Dean.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to Ms. Page and Mr. Coda for your election. Passes unanimously. We wish you luck next fiscal year. Moving on to the next item, which is Item B6, the 2045 Long Range Growth Forecast Analysis, Mr. Ariel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chad, if you can allow me to share my screen, I can share the screen. Thank you. So today I'll be presenting on the 2045 Long Range Growth Forecast Analysis. So this document is based on the socioeconomic data, which was approved by this board on September 2019. This document was previously called Socioeconomic Data Analysis Report and was a stand-alone document, but this time we are integrating it as a component of Connect RBA 2045, which is the Long Range Transportation Plan, for the reason, and I'll be discussing about that in the next presentation. So this document examines the historic trends from 1970s, as well as the anticipated growth till 1945, which is our horizon year, for population, employment, housing, school enrollment, college enrollment, and automobiles. So for the time being, this item is just an information-only item. So this, as being the component of the Connect RBA 2045 plan, when we'll be asking this board for the approval of the plan around September of 2021, this document will also be asked at the same time. So the major takeaways from the analysis which we have done is that since 1970 to 2017, which is our base year, the recent reason has doubled this population. Chesterfield County, followed by Powhatan County and New Kent County, have experienced the greatest growth. That's comparing the percentages, whereas Chesterfield County and Henrico County have experienced greatest growth in actual numbers. Chesterfield has added around 260,000 people in the last 50 years, which is almost the half of the region's growth, and right at the same time has added 150,000 people. Population is expected to grow at 30% over the next 28 years. The state average for Virginia is 23%, so we are above the state average. The only reasons I am aware of which will grow above the state average would be us, Fredericksburg, and Northern Virginia. So Chesterfield is expected to see the largest population growth through 2045, followed by Henrico and Richmond. New Kent, Goochland, and Powhatan will see the largest growth percentage-wise. New Kent is the second fastest-growing county in the Commonwealth. For employment, we only looked at employment from 2008 because different data sources provided different employment numbers. The other sources, like Bureau of Economic Analysis, Bureau of Labor Statistics, as well as proprietary third-party projections from Woods and Poole, they use different sources. Sometimes self-employment is also counted. Sometimes if it's two-part-time jobs, it's included as one. Sometimes it's counted at two jobs. So based on all these differences, we only try to compare employment from 2008, which we started for our SE data based on the Virginia Employment Commission data. So that's why we only have the data from 2008. So employment declined by 2% from 2008 to 2012, basically because of the recession which started in 2008. Employment is projected to grow by 25% over the next 28 years. The compound annual growth rate of .82 is pretty healthy. Chesterfield and Henrico Counties will have the most new jobs as expected. Again, the highest growth percentage would be New Kent, Goochland, and Chesterfield. The largest employment sectors in the region are healthcare, education services, accommodation and food services, and retail trade. And based on the current and future densities, we have established 20 regional activity centers, and I'll discuss a little bit detail on this later. Population, this is the table which shows the population from 1970 to 2017. As we can see, Chesterfield was like 77,000 in 1970, and in 2017, it's.
Mr. Ariel?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I wasn't hearing anything, so I just want to be sure.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry for that disturbance.
I'm not hearing you. You're kind of in and out. And I did want to point out, while I got this moment that there is, I noticed some members are leaving. There is one other item that we need to vote on.
Are you able to hear me now?
We can hear you. Can everybody hear?
Is anybody able to hear me now?
Yes, I can. This is Cynthia.
Yes, now we can.
We can? Hello? Hello? Can anybody, Mr. Parsons?
There's no sound.
I can hear you, Cynthia, though. I'm not sure about the others.
Mr. Ariel?
I can't.
Mr. Chairman, I can hear on my phone, but not on my computer because I'm on both.
Hello?
It fades in and out.
I'm not hearing from Mr. Parsons or Mr. Ariel. I can't hear you. Oh. Ms. Mueller? Can anybody hear anyone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can hear you now. My audio just came back.
Hi, this is Cynthia, though.
Are we hearing Mr. -- how about Mr. Parsons? I hear static when Mr. Gregory tries to speak.
Some of the things we're hearing is that folks on the phone can hear, but those online cannot.
We're starting to lose members. Is that you, Mr. Coda?
Yes, sir. I can hear you on my phone because I do not have a microphone on my computer, but I lost audio on my computer, but I can hear you on my phone.
Thank you, Mr. Coda. Ms. O'Bannon, can you hear me?
Mr. Chairman, I can hear you now. This is Nicole. The audio is in and out.
We have one item that we need to vote on.
Yes.
And with the permission of Mr. Ariel.
I logged off and logged back in.
Hello?
I signed out. I signed out and logged back in, but I still can't hear anything.
Yeah, it looks like right here.
We're having audio problems. I don't know if -- I see Mr. Ariel, but I don't hear him.
Is anybody able to hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear him on my phone, but not on my computer.
I'm, I don't know if people can hear me. Ms. Mueller can. I would like to.
I can now, Mr. Chairman. It comes and goes.
I would, with the permission of the committee, I would like to go to the last action item we have on the agenda, which was an addendum, the Transit Work Group, Transit Work Group that requires an action be taken, and ask at Mr. Parsons if he's with us to comment. Hello? Anybody on the staff? Can hear us? Apparently the problem's at the.
You can only hear it on the phone. Yeah.
Yeah.
I had difficulties earlier. This may be a reflection of whatever.
Well, I hesitate to go forward. Well, I hesitate to go forward. I saw Mr. Mann left the meeting. Mr. Riblet, are you still here?
I am still here.
Mr. Riblet?
Yes, I am here.
I can hear you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm trying to salvage whatever part of the agenda we can salvage. It doesn't look like we've got a connection with the T P O office. That appears to be the problem. I saw Mr. Mann left the meeting. If Mr. Riblet is here, could he comment on the Transportation Agency item C1? I guess not.
Item C1, I'm trying to get over to that part of the screen here real quick. Okay, yes.
Thank you. I've amended the agenda because it doesn't appear we have connection with the T P O. So, Mr. Riblet?
I'd be happy to. Just real quick, just in case. Jane, are you on? If you are, you can certainly take over. If not, I'll move forward.
Well, doesn't look like-
Okay. So at the May meeting of the Commonwealth Transportation Board, information was presented on the state's safety target. PAC will be asked to adopt the 2021 safety targets later this year. Vtrans multimodal prioritization process was presented at the May meeting. There will be a virtual meeting coming in the fall to prioritize midterm needs.
I'm sorry, you're in and out.
Is this any better?
I'm not hearing any consistent. Still, Mr. Carroll has said he has no sound.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear him fine.
I apologize for the audio difficulties.
No worries.
Mr. Sawyer, you need to call in. Computer audio is not working.
I am calling. I am talking to you via phone at this point. I will say that we have shared a copy of the updates to Chad, so he can certainly share that with everyone. A couple of quick items to note. Smart Scale Round Four, the pre-app, excuse me, the application portal should be opening next week for full applications to be submitted. We do anticipate that the development of the six-year plan could potentially be resumed by the end of the calendar year. We will provide additional information as we have that available. The I-95 and I-64 quarter studies are continuing, and we will certainly provide information regarding upcoming meetings as we have that available. The more detailed comments are available to Chad. We've provided that in a written format, and we're happy to answer any questions.
I'm pretty sure that everyone on the telephone heard you.
I wanted to ask about how we're going to handle the central region transportation issues.
If you do not have a pen, press dot, pound, or hash. This conference will now be recording.
Hello?
I believe there's an echo because of the sound problem. Some people have it on phone and computer.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Davis.
Mr. Davis.
Ms. O'Bannon's point is absolutely correct. I know we have some audio problems. However, if you've got computer and your cellphone on, you're going to have some reverberance coming through there as well as if either one of them are not muted. I think that's where a lot of the echo and reverberance is coming from. I'm on my phone now. Obviously, I don't have audio, but, I mean, video, but I do have audio, and it's very clear.
I thank you because I've just muted myself. Can anyone else hear me?
Bill Coda can hear you.
Yeah, Nicole is on the phone.
Cynthia Newville on the phone can hear you well.
Oh, good.
There's just an audio problem, and obviously until we can, you know, fix it or know what it is. I mean, that, we're just trying to use the phone and, you know, get work done.
Yeah, and I appreciate everybody's patience. Is Chad, are you on here? No, we still don't have audio. I appreciate the message someone sent about, gave me a number to dial in. Mr. Smith and Ms. Smith.
All right, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you. Is this Chad? I mean, Mr. Parsons?
I'm going to try and mute everyone through the app and see if that helps, if you want to speak. Actually, I don't hear any interference right now, so maybe we're okay moving forward.
I'm on phone, not on. So I think I invited Mr. Riblet to speak, and that's what's on the screen?
That's right. That was Mr. Mann, I believe. Do we want to try and get back to Sulaab, where it sounded like the problem started?
Is Mr. Ariel here?
Mr. Parsons, I can hear you on the phone, but not on the computer.
Yeah, same here. And thank you, Mr. Davis. I don't know if it's appropriate. I would, it would be good if we could go back to the item on the agenda for which there was a vote. I don't, I have no idea if we have a quorum left and whether we can go forward using the phone.
If you don't ask about the quorum, you don't have to count people.
Thank you, Ms. O'Bannon, voice of experience.
Okay, I'm going to ask Sulaab, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Bill Coda can hear you.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Okay.
I was working on this table which we have the-
Mr. Ariel, it sounds like your mic on your computer might be on, which is reverberating.
Okay. So is it good now?
No. No, it's, you can't, you can't, you can't listen to it through your computer if you're using your phone. You have to have the speakers on your computer muted and listen through the phone.
Okay, so should be, should work now, I guess.
It sounds good.
Okay. So, yeah, I was talking about this table which we have from 1970s to 2017. You can see that Chesterfield County had a population of 77,000 in 1970, and then we have 348, 340,000 in 2017, so that's an increase in 260,000. Similarly, Henrico County had added 150,000, population almost doubled it from 1970. Richmond had its peak around 1970, and it reached its lowest numbers around 2,000. After it, it has had a significant growth around 7.1% from 2012 to 2017.
Ariel, I would ask if you could speed up your presentation, just in the interest of not losing folks given the challenges. Thank you.
Yeah. So this is just the, this table just shows the population selection from 2017 to 2045. You can see the region's population is 1.9 million, 1.09 million, and it's expected to be 1.4 million over the course of 28 years with a growth rate of 30%. So these are, this is the table which shows the employment historic trends. We can see that in 2008, we had a employment of 519,000, and then we had a little bit decline when you look at 2012 data, that was after the recession. We, again, regained back to 550,000 in 2017. Looking at the sector trends, the major decline has been in the information sector, the newspapers, TV, radio, magazines. Also following the nationwide trends in decline for the manufacturing as well as mining. High-growth sectors in the Richmond region are healthcare, accommodation, and food services, as well as utilities, which the local government in the Virginia Employment Commission database are listed as utilities. So there's been growth in that as well. So the top 10, top 20 employers in the Richmond region, no surprises here. Everyone is ranked one, as it was in 2012. VCU and VCU Health Systems are separate. If you combine them, it becomes the top of the list. But that's how it's recorded in V E C. You see that city of Richmond, counties Henrico, Chesterfield County, all top, being top employers, as major, major processes like Walmart, Huggers, VCU Healthcare Services like Wong Chiu and S P A. SunTrust is there in top 20, and now it's emerging with Vivinti, Form Twist. I think it would jump in its ranks if you look at it now. State employment is around 20,000, but it's, it's being recorded by different departments, I guess. That's why it's not in top 20. I think VCU is the biggest state employer, more than 2,000 in Richmond region. And there is also a strong federal presence, Department of Defense, as well as the federal affairs. So the employment projections, 2017, we had 550,000. 2045, it gets to 691,000, a growth rate of 25%, that's pretty healthy. If you compare to Hampton Roads, it's just 8%, I guess. This map shows the population and employment growth, the net change from 2017 to 2045. The red dot represents employment, and the green dot represents population. You can see that the population and employment growth start from a concentration in the downtown of Richmond City, and then extends along the major corridors of the region, which is I-95, I-295, I-64, South 60, Route 63, Route 88, and 1. For the purposes of this report, we have divided the region into three density areas. Urban areas as defined as areas with populations per square mile of greater than 3,000. If it's from 1,000 to 3,000, we have categorized it as suburbanized area. And then finally, if it's less than 1,000, we have designated them as rural areas. So this is the density map. Urban, the orange showing the urban density area, light green showing the suburban, and then the yellow showing the rural area.
Is everything finished now? Did cushions them?
Oh, right. I knew. I saw that before I left.
We're taking away some conversation.
I can respectfully request that you-
I wonder, do we have Terry's bike here?
I wonder if it should be put in the house in case.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'm sorry, somebody, somebody's on the line. I'm muted. Hello?
Hello?
Mr. Parsons, are you there?
I am here. I apologize. I'm trying to get through manually and mute people who aren't, haven't, have some other ones muted. Can you hear me?
Put apples, limes, tomatoes, and cheese in the cooler.
Mr. Chairman, are you there?
Can you hear me? This is Pat O'Bannon.
Mr. Parsons, can you hear me? Mr. Parsons, can you hear me? Okay, I was just curious if anything is going on. Bill Coda here.
Yeah, I, I think, Mr. Hodges, you may be muted. If you're able to join in, we probably just need to move for adjournment, but we need a motion.
I'm moving for adjournment. Mr. Chairman, if you can hear me.
I can hear you, Mr. Coda. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second. Can you hear me?
I'm here. I'm here, Ms. O'Bannon.
Yeah, thank you, Pat O'Bannon.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in place, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. The ayes have it. The meeting's adjourned.